Equal fifteen, fine.
Just two equal fifteen.
Two.
Pretty secure she got it.
Is it working?
Then.
All right. Good evening and welcome to this meeting of Troy City Council. It is Tuesday, February twenty first, twenty twenty three, seven P. M. My name is William Lutz, President of Council. We'll begin tonight's meeting with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance given by Mrs. Snead. Please stand up.
Understanding that citizens in our community come from many different faiths, traditions, and spiritual paths, I would like to offer this invocation from the Book of Common Prayer. Almighty God, bless the leaders of our land, that we may be a people at peace among ourselves and a blessing to other nations of the earth. To the President and members of the Cabinet, to Governors of states, Mayors of cities, and to all in administrative authority, grant wisdom and grace in the exercise of their duties. To those who make our laws, give courage, wisdom, and foresight to provide for the needs of all our people. Renew the ties of mutual regard which form our civic life. We commend your gracious care, all the men and women of our armed forces at home and abroad, and those in public service in our city. Grant that your spirit may so move every human heart, that barriers that divide us may crumble, suspicions disappear, and hatred cease. That our divisions being healed, we may live in justice and peace. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mrs. Snead. Mrs. Snead, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Pierce?
Present.
Mr. Twist?
Here.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Here.
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Mr. Witten?
Here.
Mrs. Snead?
Here.
Mr. Seaver?
Present.
Mrs. Marshall? Mr. Schilling?
May I excuse Mrs. Marshall?
It's been moved to excuse Mrs. Marshall by Mr. Seaver, it's now been moved by Mr. Phillips. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Witten?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall is excused.
May I excuse Mr. Schilling? Second time.
It has been moved to excuse Mr. Schilling by Mr. Rozell, seconded by Mr. Pierce. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Witten?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling is excused.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read the summary of the minutes of the last meeting of Troy City Council?
Minutes of Council, February sixth, twenty twenty three. Committee reports, Community and Economic Development Committee reported recommending that there be a moratorium established on the issuance of permits for new self-storage facilities, that a utility easement and the vacation of utility easement be accepted for the replat of thirty to fifty Toy Town Drive, that there be a right-of-way accepting a right-of-way and a five-foot utility easement along twelve sixty-six Peters Road, and legislation be prepared accepting utility easement to the rear of nine thirty-five Atlantic Street. Finance Committee recommended legislation be prepared authorizing securing pricing related to electric opt-out aggregation program, that legislation be prepared releasing Anthony Scott from a guarantee on a loan, and that legislation be prepared authorizing a three-year contract for fireworks. Recreation and Parks recommended bidding be authorized on a contract for the arena building loading dock support project on the ice deck, that cover replacement project for the Hobart Arena. Safety and Health Committee recommended that legislation be prepared to permit beekeeping in the agricultural and certain residential districts. Streets and Sidewalks Committee recommended legislation be prepared authorizing the twenty twenty-three sidewalk program. Law and Ordinance Committee reported on two liquor licenses. The Personnel Committee recommended approval of the appointment of John Swazer to the Board of Zoning Appeals, and that was approved. Resolution number R five, twenty twenty three, arena building loading dock support project first reading and adopted. Resolution number R six, twenty twenty three, ice deck replacement project Hobart Arena first reading and adopted. Resolution number R seven, twenty twenty three, an agreement related to pricing for the electric aggregation program was given first reading and was adopted. Resolution number R eight, twenty twenty three, necessity of phase fifteen of sidewalk program first reading and adopted. Resolution R nine, twenty twenty three, bidding for fireworks first reading and adopted. Resolution R ten, twenty twenty three, releasing Anthony Scott from loan first reading and adopted. Ordinance number O two, twenty twenty three, moratorium permits for new self-storage facilities first reading and adopted. Ordinance number O three, twenty twenty three, portion of utility easement to be vacated was given first reading and was adopted. Ordinance number O four, twenty twenty three, approval of an annexation of one hundred and sixty-three acres was given first reading and adopted. Ordinance number O five, twenty twenty three, replat of outlot two forty-five and the whole of inlot one oh five seven four dedicating right-of-way was given first reading and adopted. Ordinance number O six, twenty twenty three, accept utility easement first reading and adopted. Ordinance number O seven, twenty twenty three, DORA amendment was given first reading and was adopted. Following various comments, council adjourns seven thirty-seven P. M.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. House Counsel will issue the closing amendments this evening.
Mr. Dobb?
Second.
It's been moved to approve the rest by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Rozell. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Witten?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. We're moving on to committee reports. We have a number of reports this evening. We'll begin with the Buildings and Utilities Committee and sending in for Mrs. Marshall and Mr. Twist.
Thank you, Mr. President. On February thirteenth, to consider requesting reallocation of funds remaining from the state grant that funded improvements to the Buckeye House, to fund improvements to another qualifying project, the Troy Senior Citizens Center. The remaining funds of one hundred and fifty-eight thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars would fund a new HVAC and an outdoor covered patio. The project would also include a separately budgeted fifty-five thousand from the CDBG funding for a new ADA handicap ramp and door. It is a recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared to authorize the Director of Public Service and Safety to submit an amendment to the city's COVID-19 CDBG Target of Opportunity Grant to use the remaining grant funding for the improvements to the Troy Senior Citizens Center. And to execute any related documents, committee supports emergency legislation so that amendment can be submitted and considered without delay. Also, we authorize the Director of Public Service and Safety to advertise for bids and enter into contract for improvements to the Troy Senior Citizens at a cost not to exceed two hundred and thirteen thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars. Respectfully submitted by myself, William Twist, Jeffrey Witten, and Chairman Kristi Marshall.
Thank you, Mr. Twist. Are there any comments or questions on this report? Mr. Twist, please continue.
We met on February thirteenth to consider authorizing bidding for the REC facade improvement project. For seventy-five thousand of the project will be funded from the city's twenty twenty-two CDBG allocation funding. The Troy Recreation Association Incorporated, the building owner, will reimburse the city any difference between the CDBG funding and the current estimate of seventy-nine thousand. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the Troy REC facade improvement project at a cost not to exceed seventy-nine thousand. Respectfully submitted by myself, William Twist, Jeffrey Witten, and Chairman Kristi Marshall.
Thank you, Mr. Twist. Are there any comments or questions on this report?
If I may, Mr. President.
Mr. Phillips?
Mr. Tiderson, do you happen to know what the Troy REC funding, whether the difference in whatever the bid is? The bottom line is, are they flushing up with cash to be able to do that sort of thing?
It's our understanding, they're the ones that offered to do that and asked us to be able to increase it by the four thousand dollars.
Okay, all right. Thank you. That's all I got, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Moving on to the Community and Economic Development Committee and standing in for Mr. Schilling, Mrs. Snead.
Thank you, Mr. President. On February thirteenth, committee members Pierce and Snead met to consider a request to approve the vacation of a utility easement and the dedication of a new utility easement between two lots in the Green Court subdivision. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared to vacate existing utility easements between inlots one one three nine four and one one three nine five, and to dedicate new utility easements in the Green Court subdivision. This is respectfully submitted by Mr. Pierce, myself, and Mr. Schilling as Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Snead. Are there any comments or questions on this report? Seeing none, move on to the Finance Committee and Mr. Seaver.
Thank you, Mr. President. This committee met on February thirteenth to discuss a twelve-month extension of the government electric aggregation opt-out program. Energy Harbor LLC provided a seven point two cent per kilowatt for the extension, which is less than the current AES Ohio market rate of ten point nine cents per kilowatt. This continues to be an opt-out program for participating customers. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared affirming the twelve-month extension pricing of Energy Harbor LLC and authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to execute any related documents. This committee supports emergency legislation to preserve the aggregated rates.
Thank you.
Respectfully submitted, Mr. Phillips, Mr. Rozell, and myself as Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Seaver. Are there any comments or questions on this report? Seeing none, move to the Recreation and Parks Committee and Mr. Witten.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Rozell and myself met on February thirteenth to consider establishing a new position in the Parks Department that is Park Maintenance/Municipal Arborist. A pending retirement has provided an opportunity to create a new cost-neutral position with arborist duties as part of the Park Department reorganization plan. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared to amend ordinance number O thirteen, twenty twenty-two, to establish a new position of Park Maintenance/Municipal Arborist at an hourly wage of twenty-nine dollars and eighteen cents per hour, so that the process of posting the position, interviewing, and filing position can commence as soon as possible. This committee supports emergency legislation. This was respectfully submitted by Mr. Rozell, Mr. Schilling, and myself as Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Witten. Any comments or questions on this report? Moving on to the last two reports this evening is the Streets and Sidewalks Committee and Mr. Phillips.
Thank you, sir. This committee met on February thirteenth regarding the final legislation requested by ODOT for the resurfacing of State Route Forty-one from Mulberry Street to the East Corporation Limit. ODOT is bidding the project with the city to pay forty percent of the project cost, currently estimated at four hundred and twenty thousand, five hundred and seventy-nine dollars and sixty-six cents. ODOT does require the return of final legislation and the city's payment by March seventeen of two thousand and twenty-three. This committee recommends that legislation be prepared, approving the final legislation for the ODOT project of resurfacing State Route Forty-one from Mulberry Street to the East Corporation Limit, based on the ODOT format, and to meet the date to return legislation and payment to ODOT. This committee supports emergency legislation, and this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Pierce, Mrs. Snead, and myself as Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Are there any comments or questions on this report? Mr. Phillips, please continue.
The committee also met on February thirteenth to review the proposed twenty twenty-three paving program. The program includes several roadway sections, as well as the repaving of roadways within Riverside Cemetery. The detailed report includes the funding for elements of the paving program, and the list of street areas is attached. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared, authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the twenty twenty-three paving program at a cost not to exceed one million, five hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And I might add, if not in the summary, that that is not a comprehensive list, that there may be shortages, just depending upon the bidding of the asphalt and other items coming from that total of one million, five hundred and twenty thousand dollars. This is respectfully submitted by Mr. Pierce, Mrs. Snead, and myself as Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Are there any comments or questions on this report? Our final report is an oral report, notice of a liquor permit will be given by the Law and Ordinance Committee and Mrs. Snead.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Ohio Division of Liquor Control has transmitted the notice of the C two and C two X liquor permits for Fuel Seven LLC, eight oh nine South Market Street. The C two is a TREC permit recently approved by council. The permits are defined as C two, wine and mixed beverages in sealed containers for carryout, and C two X is a permit issued to a holder of a C two permit who does not also hold a C one permit to sell beer only not for consumption on the premises where sold in original containers, having a capacity of not more than five and one-six gallons. The Troy Police Department has not recommended an objection or hearing request be filed.
Any comments or questions on this report? Seeing none, we open up to citizen comments on the agenda. We have six resolutions, three ordinances on our agenda this evening. If you wish to address counsel on any of those items, please come to the podium, give your name and address. You have two minutes to address counsel. Mr. Kerber will be our timekeeper this evening. Seeing none, move into resolutions. We'll ask Mrs. Knight to read the first resolution of the evening, Resolution R eleven, twenty twenty-three.
Resolution number R eleven, twenty twenty-three. Resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio, to file an amendment to the application with the State of Ohio, Ohio Department of Development, to allocate funds remaining from a community development block grant target of opportunity COVID-19 Response Fund Program grant for the Troy Senior Citizens Center and declaring an emergency. This is the first reading.
So, this is the second.
It has been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Witten. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Witten?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
The three reading rule has been suspended. It's been moved to adopt the resolution by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Pierce. Are there any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Witten?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read the next resolution of the evening, Resolution R twelve, twenty twenty-three.
Resolution number R twelve, twenty twenty-three. Resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio, to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the Troy Senior Citizens Center improvement projects, total cost not to exceed two hundred and thirteen thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars. First reading.
Move to suspend.
It has been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Pierce. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Witten?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second. The three reading rule has been suspended. It's been moved to adopt the resolution by Mrs. Snead, seconded by Mr. Twist. Are there any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Witten?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read the next resolution of the evening, Resolution R thirteen, twenty twenty-three.
Resolution number R thirteen, twenty twenty-three. Resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio, to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the REC facade improvement project, cost not to exceed seventy-nine thousand dollars. First reading.
Move to suspend.
Second.
It has been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Witten. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Witten?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Witten?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Witten?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Witten?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read the next resolution of the evening, Resolution R fourteen, twenty twenty-three.
Resolution number R fourteen, twenty twenty-three. Resolution affirming a twelve-month extension to the governmental opt-out electric power aggregation agreement with Energy Harbor LLC of Akron, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. This is the first reading.
Move to suspend.
Second.
It has been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Rozell, seconded by Mr. Pierce. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Witten?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Witten?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read the next resolution of the evening, Resolution R fifteen, twenty twenty-three.
Resolution number R fifteen, twenty twenty-three. Resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio, to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the Troy Senior Citizens Center improvement projects, total cost not to exceed two hundred and thirteen thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars. First reading.
Move to suspend.
Second.
It has been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Pierce. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Witten?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Witten?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Three reading rule has been suspended. It's been moved to adopt the resolution by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mrs. Snead. Are there any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Witten?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read the last resolution of the evening, Resolution R sixteen, twenty twenty-three.
Resolution number R sixteen, twenty twenty-three. Final resolution authorizing consent and cooperation with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the resurfacing of State Route Forty-one, East Bain Street, within the right-of-way of the City of Troy, Ohio, in fiscal year twenty twenty-three, participation in the project, and declaring an emergency. The city will pay an estimated four hundred and twenty thousand, five hundred and seventy-nine dollars, sixty-six cents towards the cost of the project. First reading.
Move to suspend.
Second.
It has been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Rozell. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Witten?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Three reading rule has been suspended. It's been moved to adopt the resolution by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Pierce. Are there any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Witten?
Yes.
Mrs. Sneer?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. We'll move on to ordinances. Mrs. Knight, will you please read the first ordinance of the evening, Ordinance O-8 2023.
Ordinance number O-8 2023. Ordinance approving a replat of Green Court Section 1A being a re-subdivision of in-lots 11394 and 11395, and accepting and dedicating utility easements in the City of Troy, Ohio. This is the first reading.
Move to suspend.
Second. It has been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Phillips. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mrs. Sneer?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second. The three reading rule has been suspended. It's been moved to adopt the ordinance by Mrs. Sneer, seconded by Mr. Twist. Are there any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mrs. Sneer?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read the next ordinance of the evening, Ordinance O-9 2023.
Ordinance number O-9 2023. Ordinance amending ordinance number O-13 2022 fixing salaries and wages of certain employees of the City of Troy, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. This is the first reading, and this establishes the new position of park maintenance municipal arborist. First reading.
Move to suspend.
Second. It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Rozell, seconded by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mrs. Sneer?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second. The three reading rule has been suspended. It's been moved to adopt the ordinance by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Whitten. Are there any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Sneer?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. And Mrs. Knight, will you please read the last ordinance of the evening, Ordinance O-10 2023.
Ordinance number O-10 2023. An ordinance established in Section 1151.16 of the zoning code of the City of Troy, Ohio, related to beekeeping as an accessory use in the A Agricultural District, AR Agricultural Residential District, R-1 Single Family Residential District, R-2 Single Family Residential District, R-3 B Single Family Residential District, and the R-4 Single Family Residential District. This has been recommended for approval by the Troy Planning Commission. Will be a public hearing at the next meeting.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. In consideration of the future public hearing, this will be held over for a second reading. That concludes our legislative agenda for tonight. We move on to communications and announcements. Mrs. Knight, do we have any communications?
Just the usual one this time of year about the filing of financial disclosure statements. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Moving on to comments and officials. Mayor Oda.
May I ask nothing this evening, but thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Director of Public Service and Safety, Mr. Tideryton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of words on the East Palestine derailment, since we've had a few questions about that, related to our railroad bridge across the Great Miami, as well as the quality and integrity of our water system. We've seen the pictures of the Great Miami River Bridge. Whether they are concerning or not, we do know that PUCO, Public Utility Commission of Ohio, is responsible for annual inspections of those bridges, of all bridges, including those bridges. Staff has called in to the director of the, or manager of the Railroad Division of PUCO. I have left a voicemail message with our state senator, Senator Huffman, to see if we can't get a copy of that report, just to see the last, the last that we had known of it. There were no issues with the bridge, and we have no reason to believe that the bridge isn't safe. But when we can get our hands on the inspection report, we'll read it and see what it says. With regards to the water treatment plant, we do not have any contamination from the East Palestine event. We are part of the Great Miami Buried Aquifer, Buried Valley Aquifer. That is a different source of water than what feeds and serves that East Palestine If our aquifer and everything goes from the west to the east, so we are upstream, even though we are an aquifer, that's important to know. We do test VOCs monthly, which includes vinyl chloride. We're only required to test those quarterly, but we do test those monthly. The last time that we tested was on February eighth, which is five days after the derailment occurred, and we have had no issues, nor do we expect to have any at all. With regards to emergency response, if that were to happen here, we have trained on emergency response related to train issues in the past. We will be meeting as a staff, and then beyond that with County Emergency Management Agency to refresh and to retrain, make sure that we have all of our responses familiarized. We are also assessing the plant automation. Every year we do SCADA, which, don't ask me what that stands for, but that is how we automate sections of the plant, so that in the event that we did have to have an evacuation in the area of the plant, we are able to continue to remotely operate the plant sufficiently. Believe that's all I have. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Tideryton. I have a follow-up question. Mr. Whitten? Mr. Tideryton, is the railroad under any obligation to advise a city on hazardous materials they bring down their tracks?
No, they're not.
Does the city have any way of checking or making sure they maintain their tracks, or they're in good condition? I see they work on them quite often, but I don't know if they...
No, that is the responsibility and the purview of PUCO. The railroads are federally regulated. They are, they're not under our control, nor would we be able to have any control over them.
Director of Law, Mr. Kerber.
I have nothing this evening, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kerber. To you, I'll go again, Mr. Priggin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have anything tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Priggin. Do any council members have any comments? Mr. Twist?
Just clarification. I saw on a lot of sign violations. Is that just normal around this time for some of the restaurants, et cetera? There seem to be quite a few just having temporary banners or stuff lying?
Yes.
Or is there a bigger issue?
No, there's not. For the last probably eighteen months or so, we haven't been real diligent on our banner, our temporary sign violations. With the weather becoming warmer and coming out of the COVID, we've started to enforce, the staff did. It's been about a two-month process, so we're not, we're not being heavy-handed at all. We've had a large majority of compliance. Frankly, most of the ones that you see on the list haven't yet responded to us or gotten back to us, so this is just the next step to make sure we can make some contact with them.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Twist. Mr. Pierce?
Thank you. Do you feel like we're adequately funded in the training for emergency situations such as what happened in East Palestine? Do we need to be looking at that in the near future to provide more training?
No, as far as funding for training, no. We routinely train. You know, our first responders do a lot of those, a lot of that training.